Call to order, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, April 6, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being live streamed on YouTube and will be posted later on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees be reminded to turn off your microphone and camera on your devices until you are recognized to speak. Please only use the chat box to type hand up. Once you've been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. We will have some guests online who will be presenting delegations to us this evening. Opening prayer, student trustee Guber, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, the national anthem, and the oath of citizenship?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with the spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther, to be the best we can be. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen. Name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Please rise for our national anthem and oath of citizenship.
Item 1.2 motions adopted in camera, vice chair doer, please read the motions adopted in camera.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, motions adopted in camera. The following motion was adopted in camera. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board ready file the memorandum of settlement between the board and QP local. Five to zero zero point zero zero educational assistance to be effective September 1st, 2019. And to expire August 31st, 2022, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Was there any information received in camera? I don't believe so, no. Okay, approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? I see trustee Agnew with your hand up.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a notice of motion.
Okay, and what is that notice of motion?
Its title is supporting our diverse school community.
So 10.5, supporting our diverse school community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Carabella, do I see your hand up? Oh, sorry, that was me, that was me pouring water, my apologies. Believe it or not, you get parked doing this job. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Chair, I have my hand up, I wish to add an item.
Okay, and add a notice of motion? And what is?
It's a notice of action item to the agenda.
Sorry, can you repeat that, you cut out?
Adding an action item to 8.5 of our agenda. And the title of that is Safety in HCDSB Schools During COVID-19.
Okay, so adding an action item to the agenda will require unanimous approval. Can I have a motion to move the agenda as amended?
I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Moved by trustee DeRosa.
Sorry, point of clarification, Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Guzzo?
I just need to clarify, doesn't the action item need to be voted on separately opposed to it because it requires two thirds? I just, I'm not, for me to vote on putting an action item on the table, I need to be able to see it and understand exactly what we're voting on.
Okay, one more, please. So as per our bylaw 9.7, any item required action or policy decision shall be included on the agenda with unanimous consent of the whole board present and eligible to vote. So we'll vote on adding that item and then we would vote on the agenda separately. So we're going to go to recorded vote, trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Point of privilege.
Yes, trustee Carabella.
Weren't you just finding out what the motion was about? I mean, I know the phrase that was put forward, but it doesn't have any substance. I don't know what I'm voting for.
Yeah, well, basically, I read our bylaw, our bylaw says, doesn't state that the item is debatable. It says that it has to be voted on by unanimous consent. And that's what we're doing right now.
Could the title be repeated again, please?
Yes, so it is safety in HCDSB schools during COVID.
19, Mr. Chair.
COVID-19, my apologies. So we're moving to a trustee, trustee Guzzo, you had clarification?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair, just from trustee Carabella, my first part of my question was, doesn't it need to be voted on separately?
Okay, thank you.
You've answered that, thank you very much.
Okay, so we're now moving to a recorded vote. We started with trustee DeRosa who voted in favor, vice chair doer.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, do we have a seconder for that?
Point, it doesn't require.
Trustee DeRosa seconded it.
Thank you, trustee Tomasi, I was talking to Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, do we have a seconder for that?
Well, according to trustee Tomasi, we have trustee DeRosa. From, from what, how I interpret the bylaw, to me, it doesn't look like it requires a seconder.
Perfect, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Chair.
But I will, I don't think, I don't think our parliamentarian pool is with us, but I will run by that by him just for our own edification and confirm that. Vice chair doer?
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure what I'm, what item is, I'm opposed to it.
You're opposed, okay. So the, the action item to add fails?
Mr. Chair, if you proceed with the vote, point of order, if you proceed with the vote, if we get two thirds majority, it goes on as a discussion item.
You moved it as a action item.
I understand that, but regardless of how I moved it, if it gets two thirds majority, it gets moved as a, as a discussion item.
I, I'm not aware of that, can you point that in our bylaws where that would, where that would take place?
Ask the parliamentarian.
He's not on the line tonight.
Mr. Chair, I am.
Oh, are you? Okay, you're, you're as quiet as a church mouse tonight, Mr. Kupour, I didn't hear you. So could you, could you speak to the matter at hand?
Trustee Antumasi moved it as an action item which requires a unanimous consent, which was not obtained. He could now move it as an information item or as a notice of motion. As he wishes, but it would need to be a second motion, I believe.
Thank you. So trustee Antumasi, do you wish to move that as a notice of motion? Or an information item?
No, as information, Mr. Chair.
As information? So that becomes 10.6. And we need two thirds approval for that. We'll have to vote on that. We'll move to a recorded vote, vice chair doer? Trustee Guzzo? Trustee Guzzo? We'll come back to trustee Guzzo, trustee Antumasi?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chernata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Roasty?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Opposed, so we have one, two, three, four, five, four, three against, I believe we need six. So the motion fails. Going back to approval of the agenda. We have it moved by trustee DeRosa, we, we had a seconder? I didn't write it down.
I, I actually moved to approve the agenda, Mr. Chair, trustee Guzzo, yes.
Okay. And seconder?
I'll second it, trustee Agnew.
Trustee Agnew. And we'll move to a recorded vote. Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi?
Sorry, you completely cut out, so you're going to have to repeat what we're voting on, my apologies.
We're voting on the approval of the agenda.
Yeah, in favor.
In favor, trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chernata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Roasty?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Vice chair doer?
In favor.
Motion carries, agenda is approved. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest? Seeing that there are none, we'll move on, there are no presentations. One, item 5.1 declined delegations, one delegation was declined for this evening. We have three delegations this evening, our delegates are on the line and I will let them know when to begin. Our first delegation will be from Ms. Hotchkiss, who will be presenting a delegation on flying the pride flag during the month of June. Please be reminded that you have 10 minutes for your presentation and that you must stay to script. That is part of tonight's board agenda package. I will ask staff to assist me in keeping track of time. At the end of the agenda, there will be an opportunity for trustees to ask questions for clarification purposes. Ms. Hotchkiss, are you, are you ready to start?
Yes.
Please, please proceed.
Are you able to see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Hello and good evening, members of the board, and thank you for having me here today to present my proposal, Flying the Flag with Pride. Just a little bit about who I am and why I'm here today. My name is Nicole Hotchkiss and I am a grade 12 student currently attending St. Ignatius of Loyola Catholic Secondary School. With this proposal, I am aiming to promote LGBTQ plus inclusivity at my school specifically during the month of June, also known as Pride Month, in which the LGBTQ plus community is celebrated. This proposal began back in Quad Master 1 when my passion for social justice led me to take a social justice course at school. Our culminating assignment was to pick a social justice issue important to us and to propose an attainable solution. I chose LGBTQ plus inclusion since, as a minority, LGBTQ plus people often struggle with feeling accepted within religious spaces. I wanted to address this struggle by focusing on my Catholic school specifically. After presenting to my class, I was encouraged by my teachers, classmates, family, and friends to fully follow through with this proposal which brought me here today. For this assignment, I created an anonymous survey which got 125 responses, roughly a tenth of our school population. And these two statistics definitely stood out. 75.2% of students feel that not every space within Loyola is a safe space for LGBTQ plus students. And the same percentage believes we are not doing enough to support the community. While we have been making more recent efforts with new clubs and somewhat updated curriculums, I found the problem with our school to be that our support wasn't necessarily visible to the student body. This is why I believe the solution to this problem is flying the pride flag at St. Ignatius of Loyola. At the end of my survey, I also asked for people's stance on flying the flag. And approximately 85% of students were in favor. And if we include those who said maybe, then that accounts for over 90% of students surveyed. Not only is the overwhelming majority of students in support of this plan, but it is incredibly easy to implement. Purchasing a flag would be inexpensive, as in my research, all flags I found were under $100. And if the board is unable to cover the cost, I am more than willing to pay for it myself. Lastly, it is effective, as it is an instantly recognizable symbol for the community. I know the Waterloo Catholic District School Board attempted to design their own pride flag, but this would diminish the impact of the pride flag and take away the history from the official pride flag. And this impact can go much further than just the LGBTQ plus students at Loyola. It would also impact Loyola as a whole, Oakville as a city, and would show great leadership on behalf of the Halton Catholic District School Board. Firstly, it would provide comfort to students who belong to the community who may have struggled with feeling accepted in school. The flag will also be a visible symbol of the school's more active support of LGBTQ plus students and acknowledges the fact that they are a valued group within our school community, which leads me to my next point. This would also benefit Loyola as a whole due to how it would exemplify our school motto, dignity, equity, and respect. The pride flag would help honor the dignity of students within the community, would provide an equitable opportunity for visibility in the school as a minority, and would show the school's respect for students' identities. Displaying the pride flag in front of our school would also show the entirety of Oakville that we are an inclusive and supportive school community. As previously stated, the flag is a comforting symbol to members of the LGBTQ plus community. And by flying it for the town to see, the impact can expand beyond the walls of our school to all LGBTQ plus citizens of Oakville. And the fact that we would currently be the only Catholic school in our town and in Ontario to fly the flag could encourage more Catholics to express and vocalize their own support for the LGBTQ plus community. Lastly, this decision will tell all of us if the Halton Catholic District School Board holds true to its core values in times of need. On the official website, the board says it values the importance of contributing to our communities and respect diversity, celebrate multiculturalism, honor individual rights, and embrace the social values of collective responsibility and the common good. Flying the pride flag directly correlates to respecting the diversity of identities within our school and honoring the rights of LGBTQ plus students. Also, I believe we all know the motto of the Halton Catholic District School Board, achieving, believing, belonging. And through achieving this goal, I believe you can make LGBTQ plus students feel like they truly belong in our Catholic schools, especially if you extend permission to all schools in the board and not just Loyola alone. As an LGBTQ plus student myself, I have witnessed firsthand that there is work that needs to be done. It's difficult to walk into school and know I'm not fully supported and accepted by all staff and students. While putting up a pride flag isn't going to solve all these issues, it is a significant first step in the right direction. So what will your answer be? Will you say no and send the message that LGBTQ plus students are undeserving of acceptance? That you are unwilling to fly a four by six piece of fabric for a month? That you are unwilling to support all students within the school board? Or will you say yes and send the message that LGBTQ plus students deserve to feel valued within their schools? That they are worthy of being seen and heard? That you as a school board practice what we preach as Catholics, to love your neighbor as yourself? Thank you for your time and I look forward to your positive response.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Hotchkiss. Are there any questions of trustees for clarification purposes? I see trustee O'Brien, are you first? Okay, trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank you, Nicole, for a very persuasive and well thought out presentation. You obviously have talent and your compassion for the marginalized is impressive.
Thank you.
I want to just get one point of clarification from you. I have a quote from Pope Francis that reads this. The book of Genesis where we read that God created man in his own image, male and female he created them, Genesis 127. These words capture not only the essence of the story of creation, but also that of the life-giving relationship between man and women, which brings them into intimate union with God. In this statement, Pope Francis is only naming two genders. In this statement, Pope Francis is only naming two genders, male and female. But the LGBTQ plus community proposes there are more than two genders. So how do you, as a student of a Catholic school, reconcile that?
First and foremost, I believe that it's important to acknowledge the fact that things change over time. I do believe that the Bible has many very important lessons and things that I live by in my day-to-day life. We also need to recognize that as society, we do move forward and things do change, and identities develop and definitions change. I'm not trying to say that the Bible is incorrect, or it's blasphemous, or anything such as that, but I do think it's important to recognize that simply people find more words to describe how they feel and how they identify, and things progress. The times in which the Bible was written down, things were very, very different from how they are today, and I believe that it's important to acknowledge the time that has passed since that, and to take the most important core lessons from the Bible, who am I to judge, and to love your neighbor as yourself, and apply that to our school, because currently at our school this week, we have an LGBTQ plus anti-bullying campaign going on. Our school is openly supportive within our school to the community, and I believe that we need to appreciate and follow through with that with this flag decision.
Trustee O'Brien, did you have a follow-up?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, up next we have trustee Rashdi, followed by trustee Guzzo, Agnew, O'Hern, Trunata, and vice chair Duarte. Trustee Rashdi, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and through you. First, I wanted to thank, I think, thank her for the presentation, obviously, and getting back to it, as a Loyola student, which, I'm a Loyola student, go Hawks for everyone, I had to mention that. But overall, great presentation, and thank you so much for coming today. I actually had a quick question, if you don't mind. We do consider us as a Catholic board and a Catholic school, and I do understand that the world changes. But touching base on trustee O'Brien's point, which is that Pope Francis said, or mentioned, and it's in the Bible, it mentioned, that God created humans in two genders, and the LGBTQ community does provide the most more, does provide more genders than what's proven in the in the gospel or in the Bible. I'm sorry, I'm just making a point up. So, so what's happening right now, the question is, are we considering that the Bible can change? Because if we're, if we're Christians, our Bible hasn't changed in such a long time. And it was written by, by our four gospels, we have gospels, and they were all been written by a long time ago, and it hasn't been changed since then, and that's why we hold our beliefs to it. But are we saying that if, and in other stories, if the situation changed, does, does, does the final result change as well? Because by, like what we're saying, we learn from the Bible, we learn how to treat each other, and there is another code in the Bible that says, if, if someone hate you on your left cheek, give them your right cheek, like to hate you. And this is mentioned in the Bible. What I'm saying is, do I change that? Are we allowed to change something like this from the Bible? Because the Bible is clear words, there is a deeper understanding for sure, but are we in a stage to change the Bible as a Catholic school and a Catholic board? Thank you so much.
Sorry, just before you, you reply, I'd like to remind trustees that the questions for the delegation are clarification questions regarding the delegation, which is the request to fly the flag. The deeper philosophical questions really are not for, for debate, respecting everybody's point of view, I think, I think that's important. But it's also important to focus on what we are to, to discuss or look at, which is the request, a specific request to, to fly a flag, and not to get into some of those deeper and other debates. Thank you.
So am I to respond to that question, or move on to the next proposal?
If, if you're comfortable to respond to that question, you may, it's, it's, but again, it is outside of the boundaries of really what, what you're here to, to present, and what we're here to, to potentially contemplate. So, so if you have a desire to answer that question, please do so, if not, we can, we can move on to the next.
I'll respond to it briefly then. I'm not saying that we should change everything that's in the Bible, as I did say in the previous answer. I do think there are very important lessons and things to take away from the Bible, and again, I live by certain things in the Bible to my day-to-day life. But there are also verses that tend to be overlooked in, in matters regarding the LGBTQ plus community. People tend to cherry pick what they want from the Bible. There are also verses saying you shouldn't get tattoos. There is verses saying you shouldn't wear mixed fabrics, so if you wear poly blends, then technically you're disobeying the Bible. I think that we need to pay attention to how society changes, and reflect if the Bible still matches what, not just us as a school, but as the world, how we have progressed with human rights and respecting people's identities. I think it's important to keep that in context. This isn't me saying we should throw the Bible out and start over. I'm just saying that certain things have changed, and that I think it's well timed that we support that change.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo, you're up next.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for, one, for being a voice, two, for having the courage to come and sit in front of us, because I know it's not an easy task, and speak from the heart, and, and with such conviction and passion, and, and great information, I really do appreciate it. You mentioned that you have, you have like an anti-bullying this week going on. Can I ask, has there been anything in your, in your, I guess, last three years, because this is your fourth year of high school? What happens in June? What, what goes on in June? Is there any recognition of, of pride?
From what I can remember from my past three years, we haven't done anything as a school. I know that in grade nine, there was, we have an ally club at our school, and I know it was much more active in grade nine. I didn't hear much from it in grade 10 or 11, but this year it seems to be a lot more vocal. And we also have an inclusion and equity committee, and we've done presentations on pronouns and correct languages to use. So there's more of an internal effort within specific clubs and groups, but not so much of like a school-wide event to focus on pride during June.
Again, I just want to, just a last comment, Mr. Chair. Again, I just want to thank you for, for coming forward and for all the information, and best of luck in this year for you, your last year of high school. I know it hasn't been an idea, but thank you again, and continue, continue being a voice. It's really important, thank you.
Up next we have trustee Agnew.
Thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much, Nicole. I just want to echo the sentiments of trustee Guzzo. It's not easy, especially virtually, to, to speak in front of the board of trustees and everybody that is tuned in to this meeting. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for, for speaking up on behalf of your fellow students. And I, and I did have, I have a question for you, but I also have a quote that I think you would appreciate as well. And there's a quote that I found earlier when I was taking a look at your presentation, and that was, "There is neither Jew nor Gentile, neither slave nor free, nor is there male and female, for you are all one in Jesus Christ." So I think that really resonated with me when I was also taking a look at, at scripture. And so the question I have for you is, I'm wondering if you could comment on what kind of impact you would think that this would have for your fellow students and staff, and the staff that's at the school or in our school communities, as far as improving their mental health? What are your thoughts on that?
Sure. Personally, as I've said, as an LGBTQ plus student myself, in grade 10, I had to drive a friend home from band practice, and he lives near a few public schools along the way. And during the month of June, just seeing those flags on the way to dropping him off was sort of just a reminder that there are spaces in which I am accepted and I am welcome, because it's scary sometimes going into school and not knowing if a certain teacher or staff administrator, or even somebody two desks down thinks you, your identity is real, thinks you deserve to exist. And that flag would just sort of be a reminder that I do belong within a Catholic space, even as somebody who belongs to this community. And it would also just be a reminder that we, as a school, are open to supporting it, and that we don't want to hide our support as if it's something shameful, because we do support, but I think the issue is visibility, almost like we have to keep our support a secret, like it's too like taboo to bring up. So it would make me feel like I'm definitely more appreciated and seen within my school community.
Well, I can tell you, I can't speak for everybody, but I appreciate you, I support you, and I accept you, and I want to thank you again for coming and speaking to us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Up next we have trustee O'Hern Trunata, followed by vice chair Duarte, trustee DeRosa, and trustee Kelly. Trustee O'Hern Trunata, you have the floor.
Hi there, looks like I'm in the dark here. Hi Nicole, may I call you Nicole?
Yes.
Awesome. So again, just to reiterate, we're always so proud of people when they can get up here and speak to us and speak from the heart. It takes courage, it's not easy, it looks easy, but it's not easy. What resonates with me in your presentation is, you had done a survey, and I think the number was around sixty percent of the students that you had surveyed didn't feel safe during certain classes. Would you be able to speak to some of that specifically? It's been a minute since I've been in high school, I know it's surprising to everybody, but could you just explain to me a little bit about what that would mean and feel, I guess?
Yeah. I'm not going to call out any specific staff or administrators, because I don't want to do that. But teachers have made certain comments in class, not related to any lesson, and just sort of bringing up their beliefs, saying they don't believe in certain identities, or they disagree with certain views of the LGBTQ plus community. Certain kids in class often say slurs, or they make jokes that aren't necessarily correct, and teachers don't always call it out, and it just sort of makes you question if you were to bring something up about your identity, or who you are, or if you were dating somebody of the same gender and brought it up in class, if people would call you out or bully you for it, or harass you. Just because you want to have a good relationship with your teachers and administrators, but knowing that they don't think your identity is real or valid can be sort of off-putting in the classroom. And there have definitely been certain classes that I've been in where I don't necessarily feel safe, but there have also been a handful where I feel very safe and accepted. But I do think there are certain situations in which there's just a certain level of discomfort with the language and comments that are made by staff and students in classrooms.
So at least for nothing else, we have to make sure that our students are safe, right? As adults and as a board, we need to make sure that you guys are secure and safe. And on a lighter note, just on the board there, is that my favorite Harry Styles album you got there beside you? Perfect, thanks Nicole.
Thank you, trustee O'Hern Trunata, since, since the phonograph was invented when you were in high school, I'm glad that you're still a lover of music. Vice chair Duarte, you have the floor.
Here, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Nicole, and trustee Trunata took part of my question away, and I just wanted to ask you, towards the end of your presentation, you did say that it's difficult to walk into school, and I know I am not fully supported and accepted by staff and students. And you did talk about a little bit when trustee Trunata asked you. As a trustee, I have a role to make sure every student in our system is, is supported, comforted, included, and accepted. So do you have any, any specific example which happened to you? And I don't want to put you on the spot, you could say no. Something that made you very feel not supported, not accepted? Because that's something which is serious, and I'd like to address that. So if you feel comfortable, please say it, otherwise it's okay.
Okay. There's one instance I would bring up, but it's rather specific, and I don't want to call out a certain administrator for it, so I won't bring up that instance. But there have been certain classroom discussions, there was one in a course I took where the issue of gay marriage came up after the Pope Francis's first statement. And I was out to many people in the class at the time, I think I'm out to my whole school, well, I am now at this point, I guess. But it's sort of strange when people are debating your right to marry who you want to marry in front of you. And like I was revealing my experiences, like certain people that I know were like, oh, I, like, I love you, I just don't, you know, support that, or support what you do. And other people in my classroom were saying, yeah, I just don't think that should be something that people are allowed to do, I don't think it's right, I think it's immoral. And you just sort of have to sit there while people are debating your right in front of you, and you just sort of have to sit there and process it, and it's a bit of an off-putting experience, because somebody's saying you don't have the same fundamental right as them to love who you love or identify how you identify, then it's just sort of off in that sense, I guess.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, let me get my bearings here. And I want to express, first of all, high regard for Nicole for taking the courage and bringing her scales to the table, because it takes.
Point, point of service, Mr. Chair. I, I know everybody wants to thank Nicole, she's done a good job, I'm just conscious of the meeting. Trustee DeRosa, I think you're gonna need to ask your question.
Well, excuse me, that's, that's not a point of privilege, so I'll rule against you, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, I'll try to be brief for my, my colleagues. So essentially what, the question that's in my mind right now is that as a Catholic institution, we all care about inclusivity, we all care about protecting the more vulnerable, whether it be people of your community or others. We all struggle with the issue of bullying. My struggle at this stage in the game is the following, is flying the flag one month, how far does that go for improving your plight, or your, your, your perceived plight, if I may say so? I'm not putting it into question, so let, understand me. I'm not putting into question your, your, your situation and what you live through every day. But how is the flying of a flag for one month gonna help your situation? And the other thing is, is that how many other causes or cases for which we can justify flying some other flag, you know, to achieve the same end? I'm concerned about the original objective of making sure that you're safe, making sure that you're included, and making sure that, that you're, you're meant or you're made to feel included on a daily basis in our community. Because as Catholics, we are inclusive, we are loving, and those are fundamentals of our, of our religion. I'm just struggling to see how a flag, the flying of a flag, can actually improve that plight. So that's my concern, you may wish to answer, or to shed some light on it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm done.
Okay. I can't really speak for other causes, because I'm not as educated in what would even have a flag that would be necessary to fly. But I do know, first and foremost, that all other public schools that I know of, at least in my area where I live, fly the flag, and it is a supportive motion that shows that the school is a supportive environment. And secondly, it's a visual reminder. In every single room in our school, we have a crucifix. We know our religion, we know Jesus died on the cross for us, but in every single classroom, we have a crucifix as a visual reminder of our religion and what it means to us. And I believe that the flag does the same thing, it's a visual reminder. Yes, we know that we support the community, and that's great, but the issue with our school is that students weren't seeing the support in their day-to-day lives. And I feel like if we can have a crucifix in the classroom all year long to remind us of a religion we constantly live, day by day, then it's not that much to ask for one flag to fly for one month to remind us of a struggle that every LGBTQ plus student faces on the daily.
Thank you, up next we have trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly, are you with us? Kelly responding, so we can move on to trustee Carabella has her hand up. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor. And then we'll go back to trustee Kelly if she joins us.
Okay, thank you. Nicole, I wanted to ask you, I mean, you have spoken about the flag. What does it represent to you? Like what aspects of the LGBTQ plus community does it bring forward? You're saying it's a visual expression. Can you go into some more detail about about what exactly that flag represents about the community? Thank you.
For the LGBTQ plus community, it is known as the Gay Pride Flag, but it is also just the official pride flag to encapsulate every identity within the community. I did some research back in September when I was taking the course into what each of the bands specifically represent. I know they each have a meaning. I don't want to pretend I remember what they are because it has been quite a long time since I last looked it up. But there is symbolism behind each of the colors and what they mean because the community wanted a flag to sort of represent and be a symbol for those who belonged to it, to better give a sense of community and to sort of signify a safe space for people underneath this flag, with this flag and through this flag, that all identities and sexualities can be respected and accepted.
Trustee Kelly is joined as back with us. Has her mic issues fixed? So trustee Kelly, please proceed.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Hi Nicole, I was just truly amazed by your words. You spoke beautifully and truly demonstrated Catholic values. I don't want to waste too much of your time, but I know that you mentioned that many students feel unsafe, similar to O'Hearn Trunauta's point. And today, actually, we had a meeting at our student led HCSB Equity Group. And we actually discussed putting safe space posters outside of each and every classroom. A student from Loyola mentioned that. And I know that this has also been implemented at Christ the King as well, after a year's work of initiative. Do you think that as a response to this motion, adding this would be in favor of students who are LGBTQ plus? And as a side note, this positive space poster would be all year round and not only during one month of the year. That way, students know that they are supported no matter the month.
Yeah, I think in grade nine, the ally club tried to pass a similar motion. I don't know if they actually got it through because I haven't seen it on any classrooms I've been in at least. But I do think that's definitely something that would be a good first step. The only thing is that I would want to make sure that teachers know what that sticker signifies. Because you can put a sticker up, but if people keep saying the same things behind those doors that made it an unsafe space in the first place, then nothing really changed other than putting a sticker up. I think that it would be necessary to tell teachers and students alike what that sticker should mean or what that sticker means they should do and hold true to in the classroom to make sure that it is truly a safe space for LGBTQ plus students. But I love that idea.
Thank you so much.
Trustee Agnew, I may have missed you in the queue. Is your hand up again?
Yes, that's okay. Is it okay, Mr. Chair?
Please proceed.
Thank you. And sorry, just one more thing to you Nicole. When trustee DeRosa was speaking, it reminded me of this, and I'm not sure. But I saw a number of schools that were raising the flag today for autism, which is amazing. It was actually a hashtag raise the flag. Did Loyola raise that flag today? Do you know?
I wasn't in today. I have a spare specific period I wasn't in. I could look into that for you if you wanted.
Yeah, I just wondered. I saw it a lot. I saw several schools that were raising the flag. It was an initiative that had been brought forward by Autism Ontario. And I just thought it was a really, really cool initiative to see the flag being flown. And I didn't think about it again until I heard trustee DeRosa speak. So I just thought I would ask you if Loyola had done it. So thank you.
DeRosa, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's just a thought as I was listening to the example that trustee Agnew I just gave. The other example that quickly came to mind when I made a reference to how many causes can we raise flags for? You know, the obvious one is our indigenous people. It's something that we struggle with as well. They struggle with equity and inclusion in many, many ways. Black Lives Matter activists, they certainly have valid reasons for wanting to promote themselves and their causes. So I am really, really again, where do we draw the line on this? That's my question. And actually, it's not a question. It's a comment. I don't mean to belabor the point. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you had discussed that previously. So seeing that there are no other questions, a response to the delegation will be dealt with under agenda item eight point one. I would like to thank you for your presentation. Well presented. You know, it's a tough, I know it is a tough environment for our students who are young people. We're always so proud when you come to the board with your concerns and they're so well articulated. And you're all brave, wonderful, wonderful students. So thank you for your presentation and will be dealt with in item eight point one.
Thank you.
We are moving on to our next delegation, non-Catholic student trustees. Ms. Argano will be presenting a delegation. Are you prepared to start?
Yeah, hi.
Ms. Argano?
Sorry, it's Ms. Arango.
All right, okay. My apologies. One thing you'll know about me is I'm terrible at pronouncing all names. So I apologize. It'll take me a year or two to get it right and then I have it forever. So thank you. Thank you for coming to the board to delegate and please proceed when you're ready.
Good evening, board members, parents, and fellow students. My name is Nicole Arango. I'm a graduate at Assumption Catholic Secondary School. I would like to begin with one of my favorite Bible passages from the Gospel of John. "A new commandment I give to you, that you love one another, just as I have loved you, you also are to love one another." I've used this passage many times in life to guide me in my decisions and beliefs. To love one another is a golden rule that I have learned and abided by in my years as a Catholic student in Halton Catholic District School Board. As a Canadian, I see how our government represents every demographic and legislation. I value democracy and representation. The Halton Catholic District School School Board is a very inclusive board who's both Catholic and non-Catholic students. We allow non-Catholic students to perform my study program for students to behave and think about God in their lives. It's called what would I mention this now because Jesus would not differentiate between Catholic and non-Catholic students. He cares about our convictions and values, not about our It is possible to live by the word of God and not be a Catholic. Throughout my years in this school board, I have interacted with and befriended many non-Catholic and secular students. These students were no less committed to their schoolwork than the other Catholic students. They have contributed just as much through extracurricular activities, in-school events, and overall, making our school community a more welcoming and inclusive place. Our schools provide a well-rounded education, not just in math, science, and writing, but in dignity, equity, and respect. These are the three words from our board that I have heard every day at school for the past 12 years. I try to live by them every day, and I know that the non-Catholic students do as well. The goal of our schools is to educate and provide opportunities for all students to better themselves. Our board already allows non-Catholics, non-Catholic students to learn alongside us. So why should we stop them from applying to leadership roles? As a Catholic, it is my opinion that it is possible to have non-Catholic trustees that provide good role models for younger students and that live by the values our school board tries to impart. Values of our Catholic belief uphold the concepts of equity and inclusivity. And thus, I believe that the most loving and compassionate decision would be for HCSB to allow non-Catholic students to represent themselves in student government and be student trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arango. Do we have any questions, trustees? I'll ask again. Any questions for clarification purposes? Vice Chair Duar, please proceed.
Here, Mr. Chair. Thank you for delegating. I didn't hear your presentation. Just a question here. You didn't say in your presentation as a Catholic, it's my opinion that it's possible to have non-Catholic trustees and so on. So I'm just wondering here, it's a question, I'm just thinking of my camera. So just wondering if you have taken the time to fully understand the role as in job description and responsibilities of a separate school trustee? And also the governance for Catholic school board trustees? I'm wondering if you took time to research that and make a decision when you wrote this presentation of yours?
Yeah, actually, I'm a general member of the Student Senate myself, so I've seen that role and the responsibilities. And actually, one of my closest friends is a student trustee. So I know what that responsibility entails. I know that you have to attend meetings and you have to be a good public speaker. You have to be a good role model and you have to show the values that our school board holds dear. And I think that non-Catholic trustees would be able to do that. I don't think that being Catholic is necessarily a characteristic that qualifies you for being in student government. I think that non-Catholics can for sure show values that we care about without being Catholic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. You know, you kind of actually just answered what I was gonna ask. So I'm just gonna say thank you very much for coming forward and for being a voice. I understand your sentiments and I hear you. My understanding is there's lots of students who say that, you know, sometimes those non-Catholic students lead just as good, if not a better example in a Christ-like way. So I appreciate the fact of you bringing this forward and advocating on everybody's behalf.
Thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think my issues have somewhat been directly or indirectly addressed. So I will just thank the presenter to have brought this to the table. And I will cede my place to someone else.
Thank you. Do we, trustees, do we have any other questions? I don't see anybody else with a hand up. If I can ask one question. You mentioned the Student Senate. Do you know or have you had discussions with the Student Senate? And are they endorsing any changes?
Not that I can recall. I don't think that we've mentioned this in our meetings. So I can't really speak to if we've endorsed anything. But I know that this is something that I'm passionate about, and I know that this is something that student trustee Kelly is passionate about as well. So I'm sure that there are members of the Student Senate who would be willing to endorse something like this.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and coming forward with your concerns. We appreciate it. We love to hear. Yes, trustee DeRosa?
If you will allow me, a question I just did come up.
Yeah, please proceed.
I'm wondering whether the Education Act has anything to say about student trustee membership and the denominational on this issue anyways. That would be an interesting question to take a look at before anything else. Thank you.
Want to ask that of staff or? I don't know if Superintendent McGillicuddy's
Well, if that's where you want to take it, yes. Maybe we can ask staff to look into that.
We can, I'm not sure if Superintendent McGillicuddy is on in the meeting. But that's something that we could bring forward and circulate that information to the trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Arango. And your delegation will be dealt with under agenda item eight point one.
Thank you.
Moving on to item five point four, amending policy I twenty six and allowing non-Catholic students to be trustees. Our final delegation will be presented by Ms. Barakat, Ms. Lefave, and Ms. Robinson. I think I batted a thousand on that one. I think I got them all right, but please let me know if I didn't.
You did get it right. It's Barakat, like Bearcat. I'm just waiting for the slides to start. Hello, as mentioned, my name is Rohad Barakat. And we are delegating this meeting about why the HCSB should revise and amend policy I twenty six. More specifically, the requirements that make becoming a student trustee exclusive to Catholic students.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Lefave, and I'm representing St. Francis Xavier Secondary School in Milton, Ontario. My peers and I are here to delegate on the issue of non-Catholic students who are being withheld from the opportunity to become a student trustee amongst the Halton Catholic District School Board. Non-Catholic students are not being given equal opportunities for success in comparison to Catholic students. This is exemplified through Catholic students being offered the opportunity of a seat on the student trustee team and therefore including a potential scholarship and a recommendation to their chosen university by the Chair of the Board. Due to the exclusion of non-Catholic students, they will never receive any of the mentioned benefits. We can read this directly from policy I twenty six, page two, under the subtitle requirements that states qualified nominees will hold qualifications and endorsements as stated below. An active parish membership and regular mass attendance, a letter of endorsement from the parish priest, full-time Catholic student in good standing, etc. From my personal experience in both a fully Catholic elementary school and a multi-religious Catholic secondary school, I know the potential that all students have, regardless of their beliefs, and that they are just as deserving of these benefits as Catholic students are. With that being said, I ask you to consider amending policy I twenty six. I attend a school that is arguably one of the most diverse schools apart of the HCSB. St. Francis Xavier Community holds various religious groups. And this has benefited our student body through unifying all people, regardless of not only religious practices, but also gender, sexuality, race, culture, and ethnicity. We are proud to be a diverse community, and it is one of the best experiences that I've had involving the HCSB schools. I've met some of the greatest leaders, athletes, intellectuals, and influencers, many of which are not Catholic, who benefit our school community significantly. Without them, change would be inhibited. It is a shame that the Board of Trustees has not been able to see these students' potential, but we see your potential to create change. The student trustee team makes decisions that affect all HCSB schools, therefore affecting all students of all religions in these schools. There is no form of representation on the student trustee team without non-Catholic students. It is an inaccurate representation of what the HCSB school communities look like. Non-Catholic students would benefit the student trustee team by providing a voice that a Catholic student would not be able to offer. There are different struggles and situations that non-Catholic students could bring attention to and do nothing but benefit the HCSB school communities if only given the chance to. To not only deny non-Catholic students an equal opportunity on the student trustee team, this policy advances Catholic students past a point that non-Catholic students will never be able to get to, although both communities come from the same school board. There is not a similar or equal opportunity for non-Catholic students. You are purposely putting Catholic students ahead of non-Catholic students. This is not just an act of religious exclusion, but an act of favoritism. I am a Catholic student and I see the problem with policy I twenty six.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alyssa Robinson, and I am a grade twelve student at St. Francis Xavier. I've been a student in the school board for the last eight years of my life. Consequently, it's fair to say that I have a good understanding of what it means to be a minority in this board. It was in the fifth grade when I had another black girl in my class for the very first time. The first black teacher that I encountered here wasn't until I saw one at an elementary school in the eleventh grade. This lack of representation of people that looked like me gave me a little voice. And when it did, I was singled out due to the color of my skin. And when it did, I was singled out due to the color of my skin. I digress to say that there is no doubt in my mind that this board is in need of greater representation and diversity and in areas beyond that of race. You see, my friend Rahad faces barriers that I have not had to face. She is of the faith of Islam and not Christianity or Catholicism. One of my many experiences in this board was taking world religions, where I learned of the importance of interreligious dialogue and global solidarity. It furthered my understanding of the belief that we are all one human family, regardless of our ideological or cultural differences. And this was something that I was eager to learn more about because it gave me a deeper appreciation for so many of my friends and my peers that I've made during my time at St. Francis Xavier, the most diverse school on the board. And yet I come before you today worried. Rahad, for her faith practice, is barred from representing so many of the others who are like her in my school and in our board as a student trustee. I'm reminded of the Catholic social teaching of community and the common good. We are taught that in how we organize our society, laws and policies, we directly impact the human dignity of a person and their capacity to grow in a community. By excluding those we welcome into our community, we remove their ability to grow and we ignore their dignity. Despite wonderfully scripted policies that contradict actions that impede on the chance of accurate and fair representation, I am worried because your words, your policies, they have an impact beyond the scope of the page. I am worried because there are students who believe that because they are of a different faith, they should not be heard in certain places. And they believe that they should remain hidden in the shadows for who they are. Graduating from the HCSB this year, my hope would be to have every student, regardless of their identity, feel accepted, heard, and capable. You cannot expect these things from a population that you discourage. The diversity of the student population at my school has been more than I was ever expecting in my lifetime. And I can only hope that in the future, others don't have to feel the same way. Given what we have mentioned thus far, we would ask that you please consider amending Policy I-26 in favor of allowing non-Catholic students to apply for this position of student trustee. You can be a member of a Catholic school community even if you are not Catholic. You can demonstrate a commitment to Catholic social justice teachings even you are not Catholic. And thus, a student who is shaped by the values of the HCSB can represent students at the trustee level, even if they are not Catholic.
As Alisa mentioned, I am a Muslim student. I am directly affected by this policy. My beliefs and experiences as a Muslim are different from those of my Catholic peers. Unlike me, my Catholic peers have never seen a policy that put their voice at risk simply because of their religion. The negative effects of this policy have affected all non-Catholics in HCSB, past and present, and will continue to hurt future non-Catholics in this board. This experience is an unspoken and shared one for all of us. It is difficult to fully explain in words, but it is crucial for you to understand that this is not an individual issue, but an ongoing shared experience. For me to reach that conclusion myself, I started a petition roughly three weeks ago regarding the amendment of Policy 126 and putting into action Policy 245, which states that the Board will examine and remove any barriers that exist preventing full participatory school-community relations, including any obstacles associated with any systemic discrimination. Within the first three days of starting the petition, we reached 200 signatures from Catholic and non-Catholic students alike. These are some of the comments explaining why our HCSB students signed the petition. As you can see, this is something that our school community is willing to pursue and are actively trying to make happen. The policy right now states that you must be Catholic to be a student trustee. And these are the aspects we are moving to amend. I recognize that these are in place to ensure that the student trustee exemplifies Catholic morals and ethics. However, you do not have to be Catholic to demonstrate Catholic teachings or ethics. Non-Catholic students are shaped by Catholic education, regardless of their individual faith. I can say with confidence that the leadership I have demonstrated in my school community has been formed by Catholic social justice teachings. My school has a significant amount of non-Catholic students, yet many of us still contribute to our school community to uphold the values of this board, the dignity, equity, and respect of all peoples. Despite being allowed to be a part of the school communities, we still face barriers our Catholic peers do not have to face. Even though I am not Catholic, I am still guided by my faith in God and service to my community. Catholic morals and all religious teachings, for that matter, revolve around the idea of love and respect. And this is why we are coming to you today, to achieve and improve that within this board. As a society right now, we are witnessing a necessary culture shift towards more inclusivity. And this would be an important step of action towards that within this board. HCSB has recognized that inequity exists everywhere, even in our own communities, and has demonstrated a commitment to creating safe and welcoming and more inclusive communities for students across the board. The HCSB has made a commitment to change stating, quote, "As members of a Catholic faith community, we believe that we are all wonderfully made in the image and likeness of a God who created us and loves us unconditionally, just as we are. We are called to know, love, and celebrate one another. And we are called to honor the inherent dignity in each other by treating one another with compassion and respect," end quote. We close by asking this question. At the trustee level, how have you demonstrated your commitment to equity and inclusion?
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions from trustees clarifying questions regarding the presentation? Trustee DeRosa, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you. I thought trustee Guzzo was ahead of me, but I'll follow suit.
I'll check if you don't mind. Trustee Guzzo, was your hand up regarding this delegation or the previous?
No, it was the previous. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for checking, trustee DeRosa. Please proceed.
Again, I want to express my thanks to these three very articulate students and courageous, I would say. I'm a little distressed to hear some of the characterization of our institution, which I am the first to say that we are definitely not perfect and there are improvements to be made. But we are fundamentally a Catholic organization. We do follow fundamentally the teachings of Jesus Christ, which include compassion, love, inclusion. And we try, as human beings, with all the frailties that we have, we all, I'm sure, try every day, our teachers, our parents, and so on and so forth. Everybody who's involved in your school life. For the majority of people, I think, we genuinely try to acknowledge and include everyone. Not perfect, doesn't happen all the time. My comment is that we are fundamentally a Catholic institution. When people of different faiths make a decision to come to our institution, I think they make a decision on the basis that they know that we are Catholic. But primarily, they know that we are we are an organization that is responsible and has a pristine reputation for delivering good education, good programming, within a moral framework. That moral framework, unfortunately or fortunately for some, is a Catholic framework. I know that all religions preach more or less the same things. And I know that students of different faiths, which we've accepted with open arms, sometimes exhibit the best, exhibit those values better than others. Their achievements are very, very clear. We have very high achieving students that are not Catholic. And we're proud of that fact because we think that ultimately, our system, our education, our programming, has led them to that, with the cooperation of their parents as well. The question of bringing non-Catholics into a board environment whereby policies are made, whereby strategic decisions are made, we, the board, have a fundamental right, obligation, I should say, for many, many years since Confederation, to make those decisions within a Catholic lens. I hear you loud and clear. But I can't reconcile your appeal to what are fundamental.
Point of view, Mr. Chair. I don't see the question of clarification here. Right, I was just about to say. So I'd like to remind trustees that the purpose of the questions of this is for clarifying questions. So it's to ask specific questions regarding what the delegation is presenting and bringing forward and regarding the actions that they're bringing forward. So this is not the time to enter into debate or provide opinion. No, no problems.
I have a question. I apologize. I was going to add a question. And my question to any of you, three or all of you, is how do you reconcile in your own head what I've just explained to you?
Well.
Thank you.
I really, I understand where you're coming from. And I think this was something that I also had to reflect on when coming to the decision on whether I wanted to delegate this meeting. When we're speaking on how the Catholic school system was created, it was built for Catholic students. That is how it was built. However, it is important to keep in mind that our board, the Catholic school community in general, has decided to include non-Catholic students. They made the decision to include them in secondary school. According to denominational rights, that is not something that you had to do, however you chose to do it, because you understand that inclusion is important in our school communities. And we are making small steps. That was the first step into making sure that everybody is represented and everybody's voice is heard and everybody has access to an education. I was put into a Catholic school despite not being Catholic because my parents believed in the ethics of the school. And they knew that me being a Muslim, I have a lot of those similar ethics. And they wanted me to be taught in a school with these moral foundations. But they also wanted me to have a leadership opportunity. They also wanted me to be treated the same as the peers that I sit with at lunch. It is important to point out, historically, yes, that is how the framework was made. However, it's important to point out that this will happen in the future, whether we choose to do it right now or five years ahead or a decade from now. This is going to happen because inclusivity is something that we're always pushing toward as people of faith.
Ms. Lefave, would you like to comment? I see your hand is up.
Sorry, I would just like to add to that addition, the comment to that question from before. Just to say that I don't see how the religious practices of Islam and all those things that were mentioned and how there are similarities in terms of compassion and goodness and good moral ethics in general, how that imposes on the student trustee role. I have yet to hear an argument that can indicate to me where that whatever interfere with the role of a student trustee in such a way that makes that job, that position, incapable for a person of another faith.
I would just like to add on top of Rahad's point. And the fact that non-Catholic students go through all four years in a secondary school, learning Catholic values and learning Catholic morality and learning Catholic ethics. And they are fully capable of being an example of those teachings because they do learn it and they do commit to learning those for all four years. That is their choice and that is a part of going to a Catholic secondary school. And our community is broad and we have a large variety of all religions for a reason. And we all have the same moral basis of just benefiting our school community. So I, again, on Alisa's behalf, I don't see how another religious or another form of unreligious beliefs could go against Catholic ethics in a way that would affect the student trustee role.
Thank you. Up next, we have trustee Guzzo, followed by trustee Agnew. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just, there was a comment made, I just want to clarify. I think it's really important for us to remember as well in the Education Act that student trustees unfortunately do not have a binding vote. I wish they did. I think your voice needs to be heard just as loudly as ours is. But what a powerful and thought-provoking presentation the three of you have given us. Really, it's something that we should be reflecting on and we should be looking at. And we should not be saying, this isn't what we should be doing. This is something we should absolutely be looking at. We're here because of you, all of you, equally. My question is, if we were to go back, let's say, to policy with this, to review it, would you be willing to participate with your student trustees? And what that would look like and what it would roll out to be?
I would absolutely participate with the student trustees. I have communicated to some of them about this delegation beforehand. And they have been very cooperative and very understanding of what we're trying to do here. I also want to talk quickly about the Education Act because that is something that I did research on before coming here. And it doesn't mention anything about the student trustee having to be Catholic. It leaves it up to the board for those specific policies. And in terms of denominational rights, it's important that we realize that denominational rights are simply the right of Catholic schools to create these policies and put them into action. And you can't say that we can't remove this policy because of denominational rights. Because this is, denominational rights give you the right to remove or add the policy, which is really a great right to have.
No, I appreciate it. And like I said, you know, thank you for all the effort and all of the frank information that you've given us. I think it's really important for us to hear and to reflect on. And I look forward to hopefully hearing more from all three of you.
Ms. Lefave, did you want to comment?
On Guzzo's comment, so it was part of my script where I said that student trustees make decisions that affect the whole school board. That was my fault. I would like to apologize on behalf of my script. But I would like to say, I did just mean, and it is stated on the Halton Catholic District School Board website, that they exemplify the student body of Halton Catholic District School Board schools. And it is inaccurate because there are not, there are, well, in my school personally, our majority are non-Catholic students. And so again, it is an inaccurate representation for the student trustees to just be Catholic. But again, I would like to apologize for misquoting the.
Don't apologize. I just heard, I heard one of the trustees, I thought I heard somebody make mention about the votes. I think it was trustee DeRosa had just commented on making decisions at the board level from a Catholic lens. So I was just making reference that unfortunately, our student trustees don't have the ability to have binding votes. So I didn't catch your comment in your statement, so thank you.
Trustee Agnew, you're up next.
Thank you in through you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to the three of you. Again, a very thought-provoking conversation and one that has given us a lot to think about. And I wanted to comment on, Katrina, one of the comments you had made, which we know, you know, I don't know the numbers overall, but I do know that we do have some high schools that we do have more non-Catholics than we do have Catholics. And that's just the fact of the matter. And my question comes back to the student senator position. I mean, you know, if you look at that, does that go far enough, in your opinion, of providing a voice for non-Catholic students across our system? Could you comment on that if you wouldn't mind?
Pardon, I just want to clarify your.
So with respect to student, and I can see Alisa shaking. With respect to the student senator position and the student senator positions, you know, do you think that they do enough to represent or to provide enough of a voice for the non-Catholic students in our system?
I think even with their attempts and as much as they have a good intention to do so, I think it's not possible. The only people that can speak on behalf of non-Catholics are non-Catholics. And to give that point of view through the school, through a student lens. So comparing a situation that a Catholic student would witness a non-Catholic student go through, whereas you could ask a non-Catholic student who actually goes through that daily, is different. And it's important because it affects, it affects the way you guys see students and the way you guys will affect the student body because you guys. you guys are getting the school experience through your student trustees because they are the, they are the examples that you guys are using to make decisions based off of, and they are the, they're an example of the majority of students in a Catholic school. And again, it is inaccurate, and I don't, even if you try, and maybe you guys do, and I apologize, I don't want to come off as maybe misquoting or offending any of the student trustees here. But even when you try, unfortunately, it is not enough.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to comment?
Yeah, I would just like to add on very quickly. I think Katrina put it in a very well-put manner, so I won't go on for too long. But it is important to recognize that the Students Senate is a great opportunity for all students, Catholic and non-Catholic, and they're allowed to sit side by side and make decisions together and create initiatives together. And now we're looking at the student trustee position and all, all that equity that we saw in the Senate is now not being shown in the leadership for Senate because they do run Senate. It's important to keep in mind that what we're asking for isn't for non-Catholics to automatically get a seat. We're just asking that we can run side by side by the peers we have class with. And I, I understand the history behind this policy, and I understand the precedent of it, but you need to understand that as a non-Catholic student, when these policies are seen by our students, well, it sets a precedent as to how they should treat non-Catholics within the school because, well, not even this policy says that you can have the same rights as the other students. So why should I treat you the same? Because I'm looking at this policy, it's not saying that. And although it may not seem like that big of an issue when you're looking at it on a piece of paper, as a non-Catholic who is being affected by these precedent, precedent so firsthand in this board, I, it is something that's really important to point out, and I wouldn't be here during culminating week when I have 15% of my grade on the line talking about this, creating all these scripts, doing all this research, if I didn't truly love and care about this board. I wouldn't have gone through all this effort, even as a non-Catholic who has seen firsthand that I'm not getting represented the way I should. I, I would not do this if I didn't care. And it's important to point out that this is not just me. I have a thousand non-Catholic friends that would do the same thing because we truly care about this community.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? I don't see that there are any. So thank you so much for your presentation. I think your last point was, was so valid that you are here. All of our students that delegate are here because they love our board and they want to make the board better. And that's the, the ultimate goal that we have also. So it's so important to hear your lived experience and, and for us to, to have that information to, to percolate and, and, and enter into our discussions. Thank you very much. You, you did us proud. You did the board proud. Great presentation. We, we dealt with in action item 8.1. Thank you. So we will move on to 6.1, approval of the minutes. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes of March 16th, 2021 regular board meeting? Seeing that there are none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I can move it, Carabella.
Moved by trustee Carabella. Do we have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew.
Trustee Agnew. We'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
Against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternato.
In favor.
Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
Against, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Dwork. Motion carries. Moving on to item 7.1, summary of outstanding items from previous meetings. There's a chart provided for your information. Vice Chair Dwork, you have your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just a clarification. Upgrade to boardroom technology. Can Superintendent Love give us a quick update if possible on this one?
Mr. Chair, I, I, just a point of privilege. I really can't make out what Vice, Vice Chair Dwork has said. It's, the echo is too much.
Okay, we'll ask him to, to speak louder and repeat his question.
I turn my mic off. Please, Mr. Chair, once again, for the sake of trustee DeRosa. We have item, update to boardroom technology. Was, wanted to know if Superintendent Love could give us a quick one-minute update.
Superintendent Love? Are you able to speak to that item?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Intomasi, is that?
So a summary of outstanding items, it's been the practice that we don't break it out and pick one item and speak to it. It just gets dealt with as one item.
The due date is February 21st, so.
So we're, yeah, since we're past the due date, I think it's a valid question to ask if what the progress is on that item. Superintendent Love, can you speak to that item?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. The update we have is we've actually moved ahead with a provider. More, not so much moving with a, a different provider, but we're learning how to operate the system we currently have in a more, I guess fruitful manner. Right now, we've been training staff to make sure we're up to speed on it. We're training internal staff. And then afterwards, we'll be looking at making sure all the trustees understand and bringing in some PD for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo, I see you have your hand up.
I do. I noticed on the outstanding business that what's not included on there was the motion from the last meeting where we agreed to send a letter to the ministry in regards to, to our textbooks. It should be on there because to my understanding, we haven't sent it out yet, or at least I haven't seen it.
That's, that's a good point. We will make sure that it gets added and we'll be able to update the progress on that at the next meeting.
Okay, do, have we had any progress on it that I'd not on?
I was hoping you were going to ask that question. Ms. Swindon, do we have any progress on that?
We're still in the drafting process.
Yeah, it's, it's being drafted as we speak.
Thank you.
So we are moving on to action items 8.1. In accordance with our bylaws and policy I-06, delegation to the board, we have four options. Trustees may move a motion to receive the delegation as information. Number two is defer the matter to a future meeting. Number three is request a staff report on this matter to be considered at a future meeting. And number four is to make a decision today on this matter. So I will open the floor to any trustees who may want to put a motion on the floor to proceed with the delegation regarding flying the pride flag.
Mr. Chair, I have a point of order. Are we dealing with, so you've got agenda item 8.1, response to delegations? The delegations, there are two distinct delegations. Are we dealing with both delegations under one item?
No, we're dealing with the delegations separately.
Okay, so then can we note that the items will be dealt with separately? As such, I would ask that 8.1 be broken into two separate items, or actually three separate items?
Yeah, so we're dealing with, with them as three individual items.
So can we note them as such?
Yes, we can. Trustee O'Brien, I see you have your hand up.
I move to take it as information.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Carabella.
Point of order. I had my hand up as well, even before trustee Guzzo.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I didn't see that. So please, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that we accept the delegation 5.2. I guess we're dealing with first 5.2, flying the flag with pride. I'd like to move that we accept it as information.
So the motion is moved by trustee Carabella. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it, O'Brien.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. I will find my voting list. Well, now open the floor for discussion. Trustee Carabella, did you want to speak to the matter?
Well, I think we had quite a discussion on it, so I'm, I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Okay, are there any, any discussions? Trustee Guzzo, I see you have your hand up.
Sorry, I had put that up before you separated it, so I'm actually, it's for the next one. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee O'Hearn-Ternato, do you have your hand up?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Apparently with my camera, I look like a bobblehead, so I'm going to keep my camera off. I just have a question through you to Director Daley, just a question in regards to PD for our staff. I don't even know how to ask the question, this type of topic. Do we have PD for all the staff? As far as inclusivity, I know we do, but does it deal with this? Because the delegation spoke to, in certain circumstances, not feeling, you know, safe, that kind of thing. So what kind of PD do we have for our staff currently that would encompass LGBTQ plus?
Director Daley?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So the PD that we've developed in consultation with our human rights and equity policy would include when we onboard new teachers as part of the N-TIP process, new teacher induction process. It's also part of our Human Rights and Equity Part One and Part Two courses that we offer to the board. Some of it not unlike some of the PD that trustees were provided with around supporting students, supporting LGBTQ students. So while we do offer it in a number of ways, I wouldn't say that it's mandatory additional PD training at this point.
Thank you, Director Daley, for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Do we have any other questions? Trustee Agnew? Sorry, trustee Guzzo. Yeah, I've got a, I need to get, I need to get these glasses checked.
It's okay, Mr. Chair. We're, I think we've, we've gotten used to the fact that you find us interchangeable, so. I'm not sure if I should do it this way or if I'm, if I'm doing it correctly or not, so please bear with me. I'm going to ask for some guidance here, but I'd actually like to amend the motion to ask for a staff report. Is that possible? Do I do, is that how I do it, Mr. Chair?
I believe it is, but I will get, I will get confirmation from Mr. Kapoor if you could chime in.
I agree with you, Chair.
Okay, so it is, it is acceptable to amend the motion to ask for a staff report. We need a seconder?
Well, actually, it needs a little bit more than that. Yeah, we need a staff report just to know what is being done currently at the school level.
So Rosie, were you able to capture that motion?
A point of privilege, or I'm just not understanding how that's amended to receiving as information.
Parliamentary and Kapoor can comment, but my understanding would be that it's, it's on the same topic matter being discussed. So Parliamentary and Kapoor, could you add your opinion?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, basically, you are correct. The trustees have one of four options on how to respond to the delegation under bylaw and under policy I-06. And so one, the first one option, receive for information is in the main motion and an amendment to changing it to one of the other three options would be in order. They're all related in terms of how do we respond to the delegation.
May I ask a point of clarification?
Yes.
Thank you. Wouldn't we first do the vote for the accepted information, and then if that fails, then it goes to the other another option, another, another motion?
The amendment would take precedent. Is that correct, Parliamentary and Kapoor?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, it would be as they are related topics, they are related to the question. I believe someone is unmuted who's.
Yeah, yeah, point of privilege, someone's.
Trust, trustee DeRosa, I think your mic is on.
Thank you, Chair. As these are all related to the question of what, how will the board respond to this, to the delegation? It would be more appropriate to deal with them, deal with it as an amendment to the first motion rather than trying to defeat the motion and then move a second one. They're related matters, so an amendment is germane.
Can I just really ask for one more clarification? Because in the bylaw, it says receive as information or a staff report or so I, I will refer, defer to you, but I, at this point, to me, it seems clear that it's one or the other and an amendment, well. Thank you.
Well.
Mr. Chair.
I would, you have one of four options. And if I can take it to a very simplistic level, you could decide what color are we going to paint the superintendent's office and the director's office? And if you had a choice of colors, you could, you would pick as an amendment. You wouldn't say we'll, we'll paint the director's office red, defeat it, and then bring a forward another motion to paint the director's office green. Here you have one of four options. The question being answered by the motion is how will the board respond? And you are, you are limited to these four options, but you, you could overrule the advice, the chair's decision based on the advice I'm giving. But it seems to be very much related to answering that question with one of the four options. So changing from option A to option B wouldn't, in the spirit of Robert's rules, be most appropriate to do as an amendment? That's my advice to you, Chair.
Thank you. So, so we, I will rule that the amendment is in order.
I, I feel that, I appeal that amendment. I appeal that. I'll second that, that appeal.
Okay, so we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee, so we're voting on the, the appeal. So if you're in favor of the appeal, then there is no amendment possible. Trustee Intomasi?
You cut out, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can you repeat that, please?
How do you, how do you vote on the appeal?
What are we appealing exactly? I couldn't hear.
We're, we're appealing the allowance of an amendment. So if you're in favor of the appeal, there is no amendment allowed.
Okay, so I was going to speak to that. And what I was going to say is that I disagree with the parliamentarian.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay, so trustee Intomasi, trustee Intomasi, we are at the appeal level right now, so we're, we're calling, we're calling the vote on the appeal.
And I'm disagreeing with your appeal on this, on the basis that from a point of order, you have scripted choices. You have four distinct choices. So if you vote for the first one, as trustee Carabella has stated, then you go with that first because she was the first in queue.
I understand. We're, we're past that. Trustee Intomasi, we're past it. We are now calling a vote on the appeal. How do you vote?
Could you clarify?
Could you clarify your point of privilege? Can you clarify again? So if we're in favor of the appeal, that means we do not accept the amendment?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Intomasi, how do you vote?
Favor.
In favor. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternato?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Rashdi?
Abstaining.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Dohr? And trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
So four-four tie, so the appeal fails. Amendment, the amendment stands.
Point of order, four-four tie. Is there not five?
We have trustee, we have in favor trustee DeRosa, Intomasi, Carabella, O'Brien. That's four.
And Duarte.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Duarte, you're in favor? My mistake. I put him in the wrong column. You're correct. So the appeal stands and the amendment, the amendment fails. So we're back to voting on to receiving as information. We'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternato?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Abstaining.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Dohr? Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
Favor.
So motion carries, receive as information. So we're now moving on to the next delegation, which is item 5.3. So trustees, do we have a suggestion on how to handle? Trustee Carabella, do you have your hand up? Sorry, let me go through the list. It keeps, it's layering it up. So I have layered trustee O'Brien, Guzzo, and Carabella. Is that correct?
I believe, sorry, Mr. Chair, I actually, I think trustee O'Brien was for the last one. I just put my hand up.
No, my hand just went up for this one.
The timing on the clocks are all the same. So trustee, trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
I move that we take the next delegation as information.
Do we have a second?
Carabella.
Seconded by trustee Carabella. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor for discussion.
No, I think it speaks for itself.
Okay. Trustee Carabella, or sorry, trustee Guzzo?
Thank you. I'd like to make an amendment to this motion. I would like to make an amendment to refer this back to policies so that a wholesome discussion can be made.
Point of order, I, I think this goes back to the same ruling as before. There are four options.
Then you can make them.
Order, order, order. It's up for, to the chair to rule on this. And as I previously ruled, it is acceptable to amend this motion. So trustee, trustee Guzzo, do you please state your motion?
I appeal that decision.
Can I finish? Actually, you gotta let me finish what I'm doing.
Order, point, order, order, order. Trustee O'Brien, when I state order, I would ask you to stop speaking. Out of respect for the chair, out of respect for the chair, I'll say it again. If I call order, I would ask you to stop speaking. So right now, we have an amendment. And could you state your amendment, trustee Guzzo?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, that the delegation regarding non-Catholic student trustees be sent back to the policy committee for further review and to allow wholesome conversation.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it, trustee Agnew.
Seconded by trustee.
I appeal that decision.
Listen, order, order. I am not going to state it again. You are out of order. Until we have a second for this motion, you're out of order. Until we have a second for this motion, who's speaking right now? Over me? Until we have a second for this motion, you cannot appeal the decision. So we have a second, which is trustee, trustee Intomasi, you're out of order. Stop. You're out of order. This is your second and final warning. Seconded by trustee Agnew. We'll open it for discussion.
I appeal the decision for there to be an amendment. There's no discussion. You have to go to a vote on my appeal.
Trustee O'Brien, thank you very much for your edification on my roles and responsibility. So we will go to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella? So to clarify, I've been asked to clarify. So if you vote in favor for the appeal, you are opposed to an amendment. Trustee Carabella, how do you vote?
I'm, I'll second his appeal, his motion to, and I will vote in favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternato?
I'm opposed to the appeal.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Rashdi? Trustee Rashdi? We'll come back to trustee Rashdi. Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Dohr? Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
I'm in favor.
So the appeal carries. The amendment is not in order. So we'll move back to the original, which is to receive the delegation as information. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternato?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, could you just clarify what's for?
We are voting to accept delegation 5.2, I believe is the number. If somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. Five-three. No, I think we're, we've separated them. We're doing five-two and then five-three after. Is that correct?
We've done five-two.
Okay, five-three. So we are voting to accept five-three as information.
Okay, thank you. I'm in favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Rashdi?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Vice Chair Dohr?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Motion carries. Now we are addressing item 5.4. So again, I remind the trustees, we have the four options to receive as information, defer to a future meeting, ask a staff report, or make a decision today. I'll open up the floors to trustee if anybody wants to put a motion forward. And do we have? If somebody can help me with the list, is it trustee O'Brien?
I move that we accept that delegation as information.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, so moved by trustee O'Brien, seconded by trustee Intomasi. We'll open up the floor for discussion. Trustee Carabella, do you have your hand up?
I had it up to also put a motion, but I'm fine with no, no discussion.
Okay. Do we have any, do we have any questions? No, seeing that there are none, we'll move to a recorded vote. Trustee O'Hearn-Ternato?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa? Trustee DeRosa?
Apologies, Mr. Chair. We're voting to accept this information in favor.
Thank you. Vice Chair Dohr? Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor. And I apologize for any disruption.
No problem. It's your Irishness coming out of you. Trust, so we've, we've moved on to that and we're on 8.2. Trustee DeRosa, did you have a change to your motion?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. It's really an update that reflects the latest, the latest happenings in this, on this issue. So I, I've emailed Rosie a copy of the new motion versus the old motion. If Rosie wants to put it on on the board, I will gladly read it.
Trustee DeRosa, can you forward the email again? Rosie was having a bit of trouble finding it in her inbox.
Right. I have to do it through my personal email because that's where I have.
Point of privilege, point of privilege, Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Guzzo?
I would ask that it be emailed to all of the trustees so that we can see it.
Yes, so the, the intention was to email it to Rosie so she can put it up on the screen for all to view. And I'm sure trustee, I'm sure, pardon me, pardon me, I'm speaking. And then once, once you receive it, we can also email it to all trustees if they like. So please give us a moment.
Yeah, give me a moment, Mr. Chair, like that I can do this properly, okay?
No problem. Trustee DeRosa, we could put the original amendment up and if you wanted just to walk Rosie through it, maybe that's quicker?
Yeah, but did Rosie get my email?
No, no. So we'll put the, we'll put the original one up and then if you can just walk us through the changes would be maybe.
I'm almost there, Mr. Chair, to resolving. Give me just a couple more minutes, okay? Maybe we can do this properly. Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee DeRosa?
Rosie should be getting it momentarily.
Okay.
I've got technical issues that are too, are not worth explaining at this point, but she should be getting it right now. Ah, there we go. Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, please read your motion.
So my motion reads as follows, whereas teachers, educational workers, bus drivers, and other staff in our schools are in contact and exposed to a multiple number of students, parents, and support workers at any given time. Whereas the COVID cases are rising and we now see over 3,000 new cases a day in Ontario. The new variants now account for most of the new cases and are known to affect adolescents and younger populations. Students of all ages, staff, staff, education workers, including bus drivers, are at greater, greater risk. Yet resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Director of Education request in writing the Government of Ontario to, that teachers, educational workers, bus drivers, and all other stuff, staff be prioritized for immunization against COVID-19 and that vaccinations begin immediately.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that motion?
I second it.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. Okay, trustee DeRosa, you have five minutes. Please lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think I'm going to use five minutes. I think the, the support for this, for this motion, I hope that my fellow trustees can, can get behind it is in, in essence to recognize the vulnerability of our front staff line and workers to, to the new COVID variants. And therefore, it's in the spirit of keeping them safe if we want to keep our schools open. The numbers, the numbers and the variant impact in, in the population are quite alarming. And this requires, requires a call to action. At least at the beginning with, with the clear and immediate immunization program of our frontline staff. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I welcome any questions.
Thank you. On the speaker's list, we have trustee O'Hearn-Ternato, trustee Agnew, and trustee, trustee Intomasi. Trustee O'Hearn, please proceed.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee DeRosa. Thank you for the motion. I just have a quick question. Could you give us the current state of the rollout of the vaccination and where teachers currently are rated to be vaccinated? Could you give us the current state of the rollout of the vaccination and where teachers currently are rated to be vaccinated?
Thank you for the question, trustee O'Hearn-Turnata. I would love to be able to ask that question. One of the problems is that the answer to that question is elusive, and it's different from whoever you ask it of. So, one thing is clear, is that the intent to vaccinate our staff has certainly been expressed, but it is not being followed by action. And what this motion is about is it's okay to say that we're going to do it. I actually want to see it done. And immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I have a follow-up question to that? Mr. Chair?
Sorry, I was muted. Please proceed.
Trustee DeRosa, on that regard, have you sent any emails or communication to the Ministry of Health? I know they do have a website, and you can ask them where they stand in the rollout. Have you done that yet?
No, I haven't, and the primary reason why that has not been done is because I'm not confident that without a concerted effort from our school board, as a group that is behind this thing, any individual request would ever have a meaningful impact. The only way this can be put into effect and put into motion is that if we are bored, and all trustees get behind it, and make a very, very clear request of this.
Thank you. I'll get back in the queue. I have a few more questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have trustee Agnew, followed by trustee Intomasi, followed by trustee Guzzo. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to trustee DeRosa for this motion. I do just want to make a comment and perhaps a consideration on additional wording that we may want to look at this. And I come at this from an advocacy perspective, currently being involved with other advocacy groups that are trying to move forward the priorities for vaccinations. So I'm just thinking that when I'm looking at here at the writing, the Government of Ontario, it might be a little bit vague. I certainly think that that, obviously, the Government of Ontario is doing the vaccine rollout, but I do think there's a big part to play here with our local public health unit. They do have some autonomy in the decision-making as far as prioritizations are concerned, and they are able to make some of those unilateral decisions on who receives what when, and we've seen that happen from region to region. So I would suggest that perhaps we include wording that also speaks to writing specifically to the Ministry of Health and specifically to the Region of Health and Public Health Unit with respect to our requests. I think that they should be included in that if you want to go the full route from an advocacy perspective. Again, because they do play a role in the decision-making on who gets what when.
May I respond, Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
May I respond?
Yes, you can.
Thank you, trustee Agnew, for that suggestion. I'm certainly in favor of anything that will get this motion passed and strengthened in order to achieve its end.
Okay, so since we're talking about just adding some wording and not the intent, to me, this would seem like a friendly amendment. So if there is no opposition to adding those other words, if you could confirm what you wanted to say. I know you mentioned Ministry of Health and Public Health Unit, is that correct?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, that would be correct. I would just say that we expand on who this letter is going to and examine the various levels of government that we would like to include in this correspondence. And so I definitely think the Ministry of Education should be included, the Ministry of Health should be included, and our local public health unit should be included as far as who we're going to send that to. So if we could just include those in the motion, I think that would be helpful.
Do we have any opposition to those terms or that wording being added? If there is no opposition, then we can just add them. Rosie can just add them in. If there is, then we would have to go through an amendment process. I'm not seeing any opposition, so Rosie, if you could add those in, and then we'll just confirm once it's added that that is the wording that we want?
Point of clarification, though, Mr. Chair. I think because it's already been seconded, it is considered an amendment, and procedurally, we would have to follow suit.
We can ask Parliamentarian Kapoor about that?
Mr. Chair, with unanimous consent, or as you said, without objection, you can save some time. If there is no one objecting to it, then you do not need a formal vote to make the amendment. It just gets added. If someone objects, then yes, it would need to be moved and seconded as an amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is, as that is now changed on the screen, is that your intent, trustee Agnew and/or trustee DeRosa? Everybody's agreeable to that?
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is a friendly amendment, and I welcome it from trustee Agnew. I would be very open to including her suggestions.
Okay.
I think I'm within my right during a self-amendment process to either accept or not, or refuse the amendments that are being suggested.
Well, it's now controlled by the board. Anybody can object. Before it's seconded, you could change it within the scope of it. So trustee Agnew, you didn't have any other questions? We can move on to trustee Intomasi.
I did have a follow-up, actually, Mr. Chair, separate from this, if I may be permitted.
Yes, please go.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, this may be a question for Director Daley. I'm not entirely sure. But I did see, and I have been following the news, and I did see that it would appear that the Niagara boards, both of the Niagara boards, will be having their staff vaccinated. It looks like it's going to be during over the April break, but please don't quote me on that. And I'm just wondering if maybe Director Daley could comment on has there been conversations in his meetings with other directors? You know, maybe how they went about, again, assuming that was the local public health unit, but maybe he has more light to shed on why some boards we're seeing have educators and staff vaccinated before others. I just wondered if there was any insight that he could provide.
Director Daley, do you have any insight that you could provide?
I'm not sure I can provide any specific insight. I know that the process being followed in the Niagara region is different than in most public health units, at least so far. And in Niagara, they had already started the process of vaccinating kind of a specific subset of staff. So they've started that process earlier on. We've certainly, both of our boards have had conversations, ongoing conversations with our public health unit around how the vaccination process for staff may transpire. We had some conversations, or the public health unit was looking for some information over the weekend. We're meeting with public health. Some of our staff will be being with our local public health officials again tomorrow.
Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee Intomasi, you're up next, followed by trustee Guzzo.
I'll pass, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up on what trustee Agnew, and to further elaborate on that with Director Daley, and maybe Superintendent Norris, who has the portfolio now? I'm trying to think with public health. Just to follow up with that, you mentioned that you think Niagara is doing something differently. Just going through the Phase 2 and what Phase 2 looks like in Phase 1, it's pretty clear. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand, what is public health's response? You said they asked for more information. What exactly are they asking for in regards to, I guess, like, let's talk about our EAs, who are dealing with some of our most vulnerable students, immunocompromised students, students that aren't able to wear masks, and they are working side by side with them, and actually in multiple cohorts as well. What has public health said in response to them and looking at them as healthcare workers or first-line healthcare workers? Because I believe some of them, if I'm not mistaken, some of the EAs actually have their PSW designation, et cetera.
Director Daley?
So the questions or the information that we've been trying to provide to public health so far is around some of our spec ed staff, both teachers, educational assistants that are working with some of our higher-aged students.
Okay, and so would they, under the phase, because my understanding, again, is, sorry, follow-up, Mr. Chair, under the way the phases have been done, and I've spoken to, I deal with Peel Public Health, and it's very prescriptive on what the stages are and who falls under that and the further information. And based on that, for example, if I go through Stage 1, any of those that fall under that, that are providing any type of care, which some of our staff would be, they would fall under that. So is public health saying no? Are we pushing to say? Have we pushed to say, you know, yes, they do fall in, they're dealing with our vulnerable children? Some of them are providing personal care. So how does that not fall under what Stage 1 has stated in regards to requirements for healthcare providers?
I would say, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, I would say right now that that in our region, all education workers right now would be considered in Phase 2.
Sorry, my question was, did public health comment on, sorry, Mr. Chair, but it didn't answer my question. In regards to some of our staff that are actually providing personal care, they fall under Phase 1 on what the description is. What does public health say in regards to that when we have asked about that, from a board perspective, for the safety of our staff?
I think I did answer the question in that, right now, public health is considering education workers, regardless of their role, right now, to be part of the Phase 2 rollout. But we have had some further conversations with public health about that rollout being phased. So even within that next group, or when it gets to education workers, we have had conversations around maybe who should, or who could be a priority.
Thank you. Up next, we have Vice Chair Duarte.
Hey, Mr. Chair, since we have been doing this friendly amendment, I'm just wondering if you can remove the word Director of Education. I think when you said the letter, it said trustees to ministry, trustees to local health, but I have never seen Director to ministry. So I'm just wondering if my colleagues would be open to removing the word Director of Education, and since it's a friendly amendment, it's out there.
Is there any opposition to removing the Director of Education title from this letter?
I oppose. Yeah, I'd like to leave it in there.
Yes, all right.
So Vice Chair, it's up, Vice Chair Duarte, it's up to you if you wanted to move an amendment?
No, if there's no other, I'll leave it.
Okay, thank you. Up next, I have-
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Pardon me, trustee DeRosa, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, you, I'm in the lineup right after-
Well, you're closing, so you know, typically, this is to ask questions. So, up next, we have trustee O'Hearn-Turnata, and then if there is nobody else after her, then you can close. You have your three minutes to close. Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee DeRosa. Just a question in the line that says "and other staff." I think I know who you're speaking of, but for clarity, could you just explain who you're referring to as "other staff"? It says teachers, educational workers, bus drivers, and other staff in our schools.
Yeah, you will have to forgive my ignorance to some degree, because some of the trustees around the table are a lot more detailed and knowledgeable, because they have been involved parents' groups and so on and so forth. Other staff, it's my catch-all word to make sure we don't miss anybody that's in the front lines, okay? It's as simple as that.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata, do you have any other question?
Do we think we should name them, trustee DeRosa, or is everyone okay with just leaving "other staff" in there?
Well, I would leave it the way it is, again, because how long of the list is would that be? And the rabbit hole that you run the risk of going into is that you start drafting up the rules, and that's not the intent of this. The intent of this is to impress upon the authorities to make this in no uncertain terms a priority, negotiate our position, wheel and deal, whatever the case has to be, in order to get our frontline staff on a vaccination program immediately. I don't know what differences there would be with Niagara, but I would suggest that maybe they have negotiated the position that they're in by just being persistent, and I suggest that we do the same.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, may I have a follow-up?
Yes, please.
And trustee DeRosa, due to the priority, and we want to prioritize this, do you feel the need to put a date on having this written and sent, a due date?
Yesterday.
Since time is of the essence?
Yesterday.
So do you want to put yesterday on your motion?
I want, the date is tomorrow. How's that? How long would it take to write a letter to make this point? Probably not very long. And I think the quicker we do it, the better it is. So if you're asking me for a date, by the end of the day, tomorrow.
Okay.
So is that, are you putting that date in? And is there anybody who's opposed to that? If so, it would have to go to an amendment.
Let's put that date in.
Which is the end of day, April 7th?
Yeah.
Is there anybody who's opposed to that date? Seeing there's nobody opposed, then it will remain in. Trustee Carabella, I see you have your hand up, and then trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are so many factors involved, so many people that are at risk, and it's hard to just buy our letter, hopefully, but that it'll make a difference, because it seems that the government and the health units are already prioritizing the teachers, the EA and the staff, bus drivers. So I have a question. I'm not sure I'm going to vote whether to abstain, or I'm just still thinking about it. I'm wondering, though, to ask Director Daley or other staff if, because I would want to make sure that teachers and EA and all the staff, they have the final decision on to vaccinate or not. And has there been any discussion about mandatory vaccinations for our staff?
Director Daley?
There has, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, there has not been a discussion of mandatory vaccinations for our staff.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
No, thank you. That's good. Thank you. Everyone can choose. Thank you.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify, and I apologize, because my internet has been going in and out tonight, so this may have been answered already, but it's a question, not a comment, that when we say the Government of Ontario were writing to the Premier's office and also to the Minister of Education and local public health, I'm assuming that's what the intent of that is?
Yes.
Yes, that's how I interpret the motion. We're getting, we're at 10 o'clock, so we need a motion to extend. Do we have a mover and a seconder?
I move it, Brian.
Moved by trustee O'Brien, a seconder?
Trustee DeRosa.
Trustee DeRosa, we'll go to recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
We are, motion carries, we're extended to 10:30. Trustee, I lost my, I lost my place, trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow up question?
No, that, I just needed clarification, thank you.
So seeing there's no other questions, trustee DeRosa, you have three minutes to close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll be brief. Again, I think that we should all get behind this initiative. It is, it is a matter of urgency. It is a matter of time to support what I consider to be one of the most valuable aspects and assets that we have. And that this is a frontline staff who are essentially in contact with our children. And we have a, an obligation to keep them, to keep them safe. So we need to advocate for this. I'd like to address maybe an issue that trustee Carabella issued as to whether, whether there's mandatory vaccination or not. I think we all have to some degree a responsibility to respect the wishes, the individual wishes of people who may be reticent to do this. Like everybody else in the community, or even in, in the province of Ontario, has the option of registering for a vaccination or not, depending on what their beliefs are. So that should not, that issue should not be a factor for not supporting this motion. Thank you very much, and I hope you can, you can vote in favor of it.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa, so we will now go to a recorded vote. Trustee DeRosa, how do you vote?
In favor.
Vice Chair Dohr?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Abstain.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Motion carries. Moving on to item 8.3, approval to change, change, sorry, approval to changes to the executive compensation envelope. This, this is a notice of motion from March 2nd, 2020, regular board meeting. Trustee Intomasi, would you like to read the motion?
I will, through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the changes to the executive compensation envelope of the supervisory staff shall be approved by the board before implementation by the Director of Education. This is to instruct the Secretary of the Board, to the Board, as the Director of Education, to provide it, to provide the elected board with an executive compensation summary report outlining the initial contract with starting salary, grid movement, and increases for all staff and managers for the years 2018, 2019, 2020, and the upcoming 2021. The, the motion, this is self explanatory, we have a policy I-45 which speaks to this. I'm sure by now all trustees have read it. It has steps which the secretary is.
You're moving, you're moving into debate, you're moving into debate, we need a seconder, and then you can, you can open up the discussion.
Absolutely.
Do we have a seconder for this motion?
Seconded, O'Brien.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien, trustee Intomasi, please lead the discussion.
Alright, so upon the hiring of superintendents, they have a starting salary, which is part of the grid. The grid was established in 19, or in 2017 by the government initiating what is referred to as the Mercer Report. The Mercer Report established a starting salary for supervisory staff or senior staff. And any movement from that initial has to come to the board for approval. We have now been board members for almost three years, and I have not seen anything. So what my motion is asking for the Director of Education to provide all the movements that have taken place, all the increases to seniors, to supervisory staff. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Intomasi, we will go to the speakers list, which we have trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daly, Director Daly, policy I-45 does say, any movement on the salary grid shall be reviewed and approved by the board once a year. I don't recall any movement on the salary grid changes being brought to the board. So have there been any movements on the grid since we have been voted in?
Director Daly, you have the floor?
The only changes, through you, Mr. Chair, and I, I want to be a little bit careful here. The only changes that were made to the grid would have been a result of legal proceedings that took place a couple of years ago. In terms of year over year, there wouldn't have been any changes. Yeah, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow up question?
Actually, my original question was movement on the grid. So moving from, from, for a superintendent to move from one spot on the grid to the next, it's my understanding, that has to be brought before the board. So has there been any superintendents moving on the grid?
Director Daly, you have the floor?
I don't believe anyone has moved from one spot on the grid to another, but I'd certainly bring that information back to board.
Okay, so there, that has not happened, just to be clear.
Well, I, I said I was unclear, I don't believe it has happened. I think once the, once we reestablish, or once we established the, the pay grid, it's been static. If there's been changes in the public sector salary disclosure list, in terms of salary from year to year, I believe those have all been due to vacation entitlements. But I would have to, I, I would have to go back and check that to be absolutely clear.
Okay, so you could let us know if that has happened?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other trustees who have questions? Trustee Intomasi, you'll be closing a debate. Any other questions? Seeing that, oh, trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess this would be to Director Daly, would, would the information, so if this motion passes and these will be brought to the board, is this brought to us in camera or at the regular board meeting?
Director Daly?
Well, I, I mean, superintendent and director salaries are, are public records, so there's really no reason why it would have, have to be brought in camera.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow up question?
Just that, so in our policy then, right, it would be brought to a regular board meeting, thank you. I can also cede my questions to anybody else who wants to ask.
I don't see anybody else in the queue, so if you have another question, by all means, proceed. Okay, we don't, I don't see any other trustees wishing to speak, Director Daly, did you have?
Just a, a question, I guess of clarification. In the resolution, it mentions executive compensation envelope, and then senior staff and managers. Kind of by definition, executive compensation is superintendents and the director, as opposed to departmental managers. So I think what I would be bringing back is senior staff, i.e. superintendents and director.
Trustee DeRosa, you have your hand up?
I will pass, I was just going to make a comment. In the, in the spirit of getting information, and in my hunger for information, I will be supporting this motion, thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa, one last call, if any trustees have any questions. If not, then trustee Intomasi will close debate. I, I don't see any other requests to speak, so trustee Intomasi, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So my motion is self explanatory in that when I speak about executive compensation, I think Secretary Daly would know that bag business administration or governance grant encompasses more than just supervisory staff. There have been movements on the grid since 2018, since we took office. And there were movements after the 2% increases that we yielded to senior staff, some of which have received it, which were not eligible. So when he provides this particular report, it will track all the changes that have occurred as a result of February 11th, 2019. And there are, there is substantial movement that has taken place without any approval of the board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So we will move.
And, and I would just, just, sorry, if I could, just as trustee Ian Tomasi knows, the executive compensation envelope and the Mercer Report that he referenced spoke specifically to superintendents and directors of education. I'm happy to bring forward information that trustees are looking for. But just to be clear, when we're talking about the executive compensation envelope, not the board administrative governance and grant envelope, those are two different things.
Can I respond to that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
So since this is my motion, when the, when the director is speaking about bag, if he recalls when we agreed to extend the 2% or yield the 2% to staff, executive compensation encompasses senior management. If you look at the legislation as it relates and revolves around executive compensation, it speaks of not just senior staff as in superintendents, but anybody that makes more than $100,000. When we publish yearly, which I'll get to my next, part of my next motion, anybody that makes over $100,000, that is not a school teacher because they're bound by the contractual agreements, then it's something that's initiated by his office, failing that, it's initiated by human resources. So the report that I'm seeking is all senior positions, and most specifically, the director's office. He's referring to the director's office when the budget that deals only with his office, which is the superintendents. I'm looking for senior managers, which are part of the senior team that sits at the, at the board table, as, as, as we refer to as, you know, senior administration, including manager.
Understood, so at this point, there's no point in debating a report that we haven't seen, so we, we have the motion in front of us.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee O'Brien?
If you will indulge me, I, I just want to make sure I know what I'm voting on, could, would you mind if I ask Director Daly one more question?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you through Mr. To Director Daly, to Director Daly, I'm trying to understand the grid. I, I only understand what a teacher's grid is. You have the x-axis number of years, and you have the y-axis how much experience you have. So if I teach five years with a masters, I, I put my, my mark right there. If I eat 10 years with a doctorate, I put my, my mark up there. Is that how the superintendent's grid works?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will now move to a recorded vote. Vice Chair Dohr? Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
So the motion is tied, oh, sorry, student trustees, I'm sorry, I apologize, trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly? Sorry, was that in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, trustee Rashdi? Trustee Rashdi? One last time, trustee Rashdi, trustee Rashdi won't impact the outcome, so we have a four, four tie, so the motion fails. Moving on to motion 8.4, board posting of all executive compensation by August 31st. This is a notice of motion from the March 2nd, 2021, regular board meeting. Trustee Intomasi, would you like to read your motion?
I will, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that Secretary, Director of Education provide the elected board all copies of mandatory salary disclosures for the executive compensation, submitted to the provincial government and subsequently posted yearly by August 31st on HCDSB public web, website for the years 2019, 2020, and the upcoming 2021. Just like the last motion, although trustees voted against it. Yes, sorry, I need a, I apologize, my apologies.
No problem at all, can we have a seconder for this motion?
Carabella, can second it?
Seconded by trustee Carabella, trustee Intomasi, please proceed, you have five minutes.
So just like the last request, although I put it in motion form, I really don't need it. It's a requirement that the secretary, in his contractual agreement with the board, has to provide, policy I-45 stipulates it, executive compensation stipulates it, mandatory reports stipulates it. It has to be included in all of our financial deliberations, whether it be the audited statements, whether it be the revised estimates and the original estimates. This goes to the ministry, it's documents that are required to be submitted to the board. And that is what I'm asking for in this particular motion.
Thank you, do we have any questions from trustees? Vice Chair Dohr?
Through Mr. Chair, question to Secretary. Secretary, would you be, any way to provide us numbers to the ministry and to the ministry anyway, put it on their website? So if anybody wants to find out information, can they always go to the ministry and find out?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I think what, if we're talking about the public salary disclosure that we do each year, yes, it does go to the ministry website, but to trustee Ian Tomasi's reference, it, it, I think our policy I-45 does indicate we should post it on our public website as well.
Vice Chair Dohr, do you have a follow up?
Thank you.
No follow, okay. Trustee Carabella, you, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so that's great, so it'll be good to have that posted and follow our policy. So I'm just wondering if this particular motion needs a date when that will be posted? Or is it just, we're expecting now, when this passes, that this will be posted on August 31st? Or will we be told earlier?
Director Daly, typically, when is the report compiled?
Well, they, by, by our policy, it says it needs to be posted by, by the date that trustee. Well, they, but by, by our policy, it says it needs to be posted by, by the date that trustee Ian Tomasi has in his motion. Um, and I would remind, uh, trustees that they've already, uh, been privy to the salary disclosure list for last year's salaries. We, we do report that, uh, to them each year, uh, but we haven't, we don't have it, we don't have it directly posted on the website.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up question?
Um, well, the follow-up question would be, so, just to confirm, it, it is part of our policy, so this motion is, is just, uh, making sure that, that does get posted. So we receive it ourselves, but it is posted on our website for constituents and ratepayers and the public to see. That's the purpose of that, correct?
Correct, that's, that's what the motion states, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Uh, I want to just comment on what trustee Carabella just said. Um, that's true, even the last motion was part of our policy. I'm, I'm getting the sense that this is just to make sure the policy is followed. Am I correct, trustee Ian Tomasi?
Um, it, it, so through you, Mr. Chair. Um, this speaks, um, a little bit deeper, it goes deeper. So we have required reporting that we perform when we submit our revised estimates. Our revised estimates have in there, or can, in note number five, what the director's office is spending and what the overall expenditure that bag contains. The reason that's relevant is that the ministry only funds bag, which is enveloped, a certain amount of money. If, we cannot go beyond, beyond that. So when I ask for this partic-, I'm doing two things. One, to see if we're compliant, and two, to make sure that increases aren't given out, because it is public money, and we as trustees have the legal, which means that the secretary, who is the person who initiates the particular increases in grid movements, has to buy approval of the board. This is not a policy. This is legal requirement under the Education Act and Ontario regulations that relate to executive compensation. We're not free to just give increases when we want. It has to be done according to the rules and regulations provided to us by the auditor, and, and it has to be disclosed. Notwithstanding that, in August third, on August thirteenth, twenty eighteen, when the new government came into power, it froze all wages. We have grid movements that are, that were brought to us two months ago, or a month ago, where we see grid movements and increases to salaries in the twenty percent range. And we can speak to those when we receive the report that, the two reports that I was, whether the board decides that I'm not entitled to, that I reported, it doesn't matter, because I will just.
Trustee Intomasi, you're, you're en-, you're entering into debate, and you have, uh, you have the closing. So we'll, um, if trustee O'Brien doesn't have a follow-up question.
Mr. Chair, I'm stating facts.
Yeah, you're, trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up question?
So just to be clear, it's not so much policy as the legal requirement, you want to see it followed through, that's it, correct?
Correct.
All right, okay. Trustee Ohern Trenata, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, to Director Daley, just a couple very quick questions. Um, before I vote on this, um, I want to make sure there's no gap. So the salary disclosures for executive compensation is submitted to the provincial government for all these years, is that correct? Twenty nineteen, and then has been submitted already, correct?
Correct.
Has it been posted on the H, the public website for twenty nineteen?
Uh, it has not been posted on the public website.
Okay, all right, but everything else was done. Okay, thank you, Director Daley.
Do we have any other questions? If not, trustee Intomasi will close. I don't see any other questions. Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor.
Um, so in closing, I'm asking for this partic-, particular report. It's both in keeping with our policy, which, uh, it revolved from the legal requirements that boards have to provide that information and to make it a public disclose, um, and that's about it. So it's exactly what the motion states.
Uh, thank you, trustee Intomasi, we'll move to a recorded vote. Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Ohern Trenata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Christie, uh, sorry, trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor again.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm getting punchy. I need, uh, I need a coffee. Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Uh, vice chair Duer? So the motion carries five to three. Moving on to, we have three minutes left till, uh, till we're voting, so we can, we can start with the school naming, um, Milton Number Three Catholic Secondary School. Uh, Superintendent Bakich, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to provide trustees with an update on the process of naming the new Milton Number Three Catholic Secondary School as per board policy I fifteen, school name selection. Uh, by way of background information, in consultation with the Milton Number Three School Name Selection Committee, we can sit, which consisted of Chair Patrick Murphy, vice chair Marvin Dorte, Father James Petrie of Saint Benedict Parish, parent Claudia Beren Yaneiro, parent Jennifer Santos, student trustee Nicholas Gubert, myself, and principal Kevin Wong. Four names were submitted for consideration by members of the broader community. On Wednesday, February twenty-fourth, we sought stakeholder consultation, um, for potential names, and the, uh, names were sent out to, um, the request for names was sent out to Our Lady of Fatima and Guardian Angels, uh, school communities, and you'll find the results of the feedback received in the attached appendix A. The committee, uh, reconvened on March seventeenth and, uh, to review the names submitted by members of the community, and we developed a shortlist of names in accordance with the diocesan criteria outlined in the policy. They considered all the names and rationale provided by the community members and created a shortlist of four names, which were Blessed Carla Akutis, Saint Josephine Baquita, Saint John Bosco, and Saint Kateri Tekakuita. And as a follow-up, we sought stakeholder consultation to vote for the preferred names. A voluntary anonymous online feedback form was made available between March nineteenth and March twenty-ninth inclusive, and the link to the online forms was sent via email on March nineteenth to all the parents with children currently attending Guardian Angels and Our Lady of Fatima, um, Catholic Elementary Schools, inviting them to select their top two preferences from the shortlist of potential school names. The survey was also promoted on the two school websites, as well as through Saint Benedict Parish, uh, for parishioner input. And you can find the rationale for the name selection in a brief bio-, biography of each saint, um, in appendix B. The feedback received is attached as appendix C, and as illustrated in the chart in the table in appendix A, uh, there were a, a total of, um, one thousand and seventy-five votes among the four suggested school names. The name Saint Kateri Tekakuita had the highest number of first-choice votes with forty-two percent. Saint John Bosco received thirty-five percent of the votes, with Saint Josephine Baquita receiving twelve percent, and Blessed Carla Akutis with eleven percent. The preference of the community as outlined above is in favor of naming the new Milton Number Three Catholic Secondary School, Saint Kateri Tekakuita. In conclusion, policy I fifteen stipulates that a list of two names, a preferred name and an alternate, be submitted to the bishop of the diocese for review and consideration. Trustees are invited to consider two recommended names for the new Milton Number Three Catholic Secondary School to be forward, forwarded to the Diocese of Hamilton for consideration by His Excellency Bishop Douglas Crosby. And an action report recommending a preferred name and alternate to be submitted to Bishop Douglas Crosby for his consideration and response will be brought forward at the April twentieth, twenty-one board meeting. I'm happy to take any questions from trustees.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Before that, we have a little bit of housekeeping, we have to vote to extend. Uh, it must be unanimous, do we have a mover? Uh, vice chair Duer, move, do we have a seconder?
I'll second you.
Uh, trustee Agnew, seconded. We'll move to a, we'll move to recorded vote, uh, trustee Intomasi?
Against.
Opposed, okay, we're, therefore, we're not exposed, uh, extending, it has to be unanimous. Uh, Superintendent Bakich, thank you so much for your presentation, I'm glad we could get it in, and some may argue that you were a minute over our allotted time, it has nothing to do with me being from Milton and being on the committee, and so on and so forth. So thank, thank you very much. Uh, we'll move to our closing prayer, which happens to be my responsibility tonight. Start with a sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. This is a, an Easter prayer. Uh, the veil of darkness transformed to the brightest light. The most dreadful end became the most beautiful beginning. The depths of despair faded to reveal hope everlasting, the curse of death defeated by eternal life. Thank you, our Lord, for the wonder of Easter, in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you all, uh, have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Thank you, good night.